Uh, first on the uh, attend to here is public comment. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, if you have anything for public comment. Alright, hearing none. Uh, new business, we're here to discuss. Discussion regarding the purpose, duties, responsibilities, qualifications, knowledge, and skill departments formulating a position description for the office. For the position of borough manager. So. Charlie provided us with a list of what he does every day. Or what he does. Around the year, I guess.
About the month, yeah.
Month, year.
Yeah, it looks like an awful lot for a day.
Yeah. Um, so what we need to do is we need to. Put that into a list, a list of responsibilities, qualifications. For the position description that we're going to advertise.
Does anybody have the original? That one group?
Yeah, that doesn't argue anymore.
The walk plan, doesn't it?
Doesn't have more than anything more, yes.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I was wondering, um. My recollection of when this went around last time.
Yeah.
Was anybody that was interested submitted a letter.
Yep.
Um, to council. And then, I believe, and is this court here?
Yeah.
Is, is that, is that how that went?
Yeah, we had them submit letters with their qualifications. And stuff like that, what their intended salary was.
And then you interviewed, then you conduct the interviews?
Yeah, then they conduct the interviews.
And then, and then council select them?
Is the council, do they sit in on the interviews?
Well, probably.
Yeah, there was, uh, yeah, there was. There were at least three or four of us there.
Okay.
Because they don't, um, I don't think there's any hard fast rule, how many have to sit in? Who sits in, or what?
I think we all should sit in.
I think they cut it to three.
Why?
So they want, okay, it was four of the, what's that? With four of them.
You can't, you can't have more than four of us together unless, unless we advertise it.
You can't have less than three, it's a public meeting. Only three would be gathered at a public meeting.
You don't say that.
So how do you, how do you select the council members, pull them out of that?
No, we had a committee. We had a people that were on a committee that did, did that. Reason I sat in because the president's a de facto member of any. Any body of the borough council.
Well, who is on this committee now?
We have all those people at home.
We haven't, yeah, but I mean. We haven't decided.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I'm just asking.
Same, we haven't gotten, we look at. Yeah, that's, that's kind of why I was asking is, we're here tonight, I think, to try and nail down what our process is gonna be.
Okay.
And, and how we're gonna do this. And, and I was only asking. How we did it last time.
Mm-hmm.
To see if that's how we wanna do it this time.
They do Brett Baker, Law Kenny.
And the guy across the.
And Brian, they're the three that interview me every time. I was interviewing, but interviewing six times.
Six times.
Six different times.
I watched that quick, I was like.
So, so we need to go two options here then? Like we discussed at the last time, if we can't find one person, and we have to go with two?
The, the, the kind of.
If you're talking about.
Right. Yeah, the.
Why do we have two people do the job that he did one person did? Why do we need two people?
Because you're not gonna find that quality. Not quality, sorry. That being able to do those things that I do. Because I would.
Well, then you should, you should find someone that qualifies to do that.
But what I'm gonna say is. Well, that's the more than race here. Okay, I walk around with this little man all the time, I do most work down there. Plumbing wise and everything, so I know where all the lines better than they are. I'm the unicorn and so forth, there isn't one excellent. Leave with one, I'm one, we're done. You guys are gonna find someone who can.
Will brought that up at the last meeting, that if we couldn't find anybody that could do everything he does, we might have to look at another second person.
Yeah, I, I wanna hold out for the unicorn. You know what I mean, that guy that can do, that can do everything? You know what I mean, but.
How much are you gonna pay one guy and pay the other guy? Split your salary in half between both of them?
You're gonna do that.
Okay.
You can figure double on his.
I, I think we're, I, I wanna be careful, we could put the cart away in front of the horse and just throw our hands up and be frustrated in the end.
Okay.
But I, I think we have to kind of work through this, like. Do we want people to send us a letter? Or do we wanna generate an application? You know what I mean, there's different ways of doing all this stuff. Um, I, I, I was bringing up, do we wanna do it like it was held last time? Where, where we put the word out and people submit letters to us?
You don't wanna keep people hanging like we were, but those people won't hang around a week. Yeah, I have a house, please, we didn't have.
But I will probably take an application process, as part of it, other qualifications and all of that.
Well, we have to generate that then, or, and probably they solicitor to do that. And I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what we wanna do. You know what I mean, but we, we will. We're gonna have a vetting process, and it's a matter of kind of how we wanna prepare for this and how we wanna do it.
I, I did talk to, to Ida, there's no. He doesn't need to, to generate the position description or the. All the, might get one of the new parts of the application. In a, in a, um, but, other than that, he doesn't really need to be in the, the choosing part of it. Um, he, I did ask him if his firm would be able to vet, properly vet an individual that would be select. With, uh, background, financial, that all that kind of stuff. If the firm can do that.
So we're willing to play with that?
Right. Um.
And, and I would like to get from, it's been, it's been a few years since I did interviews on a mass scale. But there are questions you can't ask too.
Right.
And I kind of wanna make sure we're educated as a council. You know, there's certain things that you just said, there's certain questions you can't ask.
Yes, okay.
I mean, this is not the first time a position like this has come available. There is generalized things that you can get right off the internet that's gonna be thick. Almost ninety percent of what we need. When we came to the tail of this last, and I would say we need to invent our own application to avoid things like asking questions that we should not be asking. And they need to be asked, everybody needs to be asked the same exact questions, so there's not any kind of.
Right, yeah, the questions will be prepared and had at the time, and, um, then we can, the, the panel of interviewers can, can take turns asking the questions. Or someone asks the first three questions, someone asks the next three, whatever.
And I was gonna touch base on that too, we, we would put a certain list of questions together that every one of them gets asked the exact same questions. So it's not, you know, they don't really do this stuff.
From, from way back when I used to do it, that's what we had, we had a prepared list of questions. We'd go around wherever the route was, and we'd get one through three, I'd get five through six, whatever. And, um, then after that, after we asked our allotted questions, and we generally made notes to each question. We had a note sheet for each applicant that we interviewed, so that you could make your notes to how they answered your different questions. Um, and then we'd all kind of have our own little custom questions, you know, kind of after the formal questions were, were completed. So, but, you know, Bill, I wanna hold out for a unicorn. One guy to do it all.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm very concerned, because we'll find that person.
Just to make sure.
But we gotta try.
But we gotta, that, that's what we're shooting for first.
But I don't know what the, uh, opportunity of being called out, anytime that it would be.
Twenty-four seven, that's the question that you're gonna have to ask now.
Right, and that's what makes it tougher for one person, because you won't do.
Yeah, we all agree on the unicorn, like he said, first.
Right.
If we can't find that unicorn, then we might have to go the other route.
How many second?
There's been a bit of attack.
Second person, I think we get second person, yeah. Well, we have, we're really, one, two, three, we really have four. Okay, there's only one year, many good ones. One works two days, the other works over two days, and the other works solely one billing and. For all three companies.
So on average, they're working how many hours?
Uh, five hours. Yeah, five hours a day.
Five hours a day.
Twenty, you're twenty hours a week, that's true, two months.
And the only person who worked, maybe?
Uh, what does she get, I don't know, because she gets, I shouldn't say I don't know, if you know, she gets on RM. It's about thirteen. Thirteen to eighteen hours a month. But she gets twenty some hours a month in store service, that's who she really does the work for.
So what do we pay her, thirteen to?
Yeah, about thirteen hours. Again, she comes in at two o'clock, she comes in after everybody else is gone.
Does she get twenty, or whatever you said?
Yeah. About twenty-three a month. I don't say numbers, month, that's how we do it with it.
So we're gonna try and ask for letters like we did last time? Is that, are we in agreeance that we wanna, we wanna ask for people's, I guess we'd ask for people to send letters in?
Yeah, I have like a, there's some donations, you can check all those formality boxes. And then ask them to send a letter in, so one can go, you know, all the, the stuff that state would wanna see. Is gonna be filled out and compliant with that, and then I would say ask them to send a letter in. Obviously, after they put in their letter, just a minute, we're gonna exceed pretty quickly to.
If they consider the resume, my question there, if we're finding this person, all the burrows have their own letter. So that can be part of the planning.
Well, there are some of them do, except like Camp Hill is not.
Uh, well, like Newbury Township does, but you're talking about borough compared to some other towns.
Yeah, so, yeah, just about every borough does. Rock Haven does, Blue Spring does, uh, Middletown does. There's a bunch of, probably fifty, sixty some, boroughs will do it.
So we're looking for a letter, if I'm getting this right, we're looking for a letter of, of, from people that are interested. We're gonna, we're gonna come up with some kind of application that they can fill out. Right? We're gonna ask for them, do we wanna ask for them to submit a resume as well on top of the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be all in one thing, yeah, the cover page should be the letter of. Why them, and all that.
Why technique?
And then we're gonna have to put together a, a committee. With three council members on it. Can we just double check that with Aiden, if we can't all be there?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with, with Ray bringing it back to the rest of us, you know, at some point. But, but we're all, you know, we're all gonna have an insight, we're gonna put in who this person's gonna be, so.
Is the rules on recording an interview, is that kind of fact, like if you have a phone recording or?
I, I don't think you can record an interview. I think those are supposed to be confidential.
Well, I think they're all like the discussing.
Yeah, I think they're.
Well, also, you don't want the other interviewees to.
Right, receive.
To hear it, or they.
Yeah, just curious, have some of the water stuff.
Yeah. You gonna have a probationary period?
I think we absolutely, once we get to that point, should, I mean, I'm anticipating that. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that we could get, select a person between now and the end of the year, just, and I'm just blurping this out.
It's a hope period for the council.
I'm, I'm hoping that we could select somebody, and then have that person shadow Charlie to learn the electrical system, the sewer system, the water system. You know, all the different things, and that's kind of, you know, so I'm, I'm anticipating there'd be a selection. And then there's gonna be a shadowing or working together type period of time, and, and I'm hoping here a little bit to how long that's gonna be. And, because I think it'll be dependent on the background of the person. You know, whether they're a strong office or a strong field background. I'm, and I'm only, guys, I'm only talking.
Right.
And also, you know, it's a easy good separation, on their phone me.
And I just knew before it wasn't too easy. We obviously were probably behind the work of a strong office person.
Right.
And that's where, as we work through the process, we're gonna figure out if it's gonna be one unicorn, or if it's gonna be a couple of people. So, just to kind of stay in that vein.
I just wanna step in for, and the reason I'm saying that, because the office part of this job is starting to get to be the four five hour of the day. So if you do that, and you're doing field work, it's gonna be full time. You guys are gonna have to come up with benefits and vacation, all that big stuff. Or if you do two people. Or have an outside vendor to do your outside work. You can keep working back down, stay at the part time for satisfaction. I just wanna.
And it's, and it's all gonna be a matter of what we get, what for interest.
What to do, you know, just, you know, that stuff, I'll just shoot it out.
So then how long would probationary period be?
I, I don't know, I think it's gonna be based on their experience.
Would that start when they would start?
Yeah, it would start from day, typically, probationary periods start from day one, usually last about six months.
Yeah, some stuff, um, you don't, some stuff you only work.
Six months.
You can do it one time or six months, if some stuff's only once a year.
Yeah, I think six months probationary.
And usually that will meet out any big conflicts.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. And you meet person. You don't wanna meet person, that year.
Um. So our announcement that we put out for calling, um, a lot of, uh, burrows and townships put a list of, of responsibilities and qualifications on the announcement. Or at least on, that are available for them to, to get to via the announcement.
So you're saying like. Local government experience type?
Yeah, so what I found.
High, high level stuff, not individual.
Right, what I found was, uh, like, one, for example, manage day-to-day operations of all departments. Next full form, direct planning, development, coordination to align with council directives, all requirements. Uh, oversee implementation and enforcement of. Borough ordinance and codes, that necessarily isn't, uh.
The election of the mayor?
The election of the mayor, yeah.
Just talking, we're making a zoning office, so.
But yes.
It's still gonna be the, or.
There's something in there, but I can make a clean judgment of it.
I don't see anything in this duty sphere about collecting taxes.
I'm dropping that, just here. But, I'm dropping that.
Okay.
Yeah. I did that thinking that people would be happy about it, but they didn't have to really work whatever creative taxes. Doesn't seem to be too much of any array about it, so it's not in my job, job description, so I'm dropping it. I'm giving it to you.
So like manager experience, you're probably gonna benefit, like, other than like, there's a lot of things that most people, like, figure out just by doing. Like, experience wise, when it comes to like in the field, like, are there gonna be tasks, or would it, we'll, we'll phrase it as any person on that unicorn. Electrical ability, is that a bunch of, uh, electric?
Transformers that need opens, you got transformer trees that need cut around. You have to place, sentence, pick off residents, because they don't want the trees, but you can't get in them, and they can't.
You're not cutting trees, right?
Well, you're actually one cutting.
So far back to me.
I don't want it.
Yeah, if you have a tree cutter comes in.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Because I'm in the balance.
Someone's made their own experience important.
Yeah, that is gonna be four meters.
Yeah.
So guys, but we're, we're, we're gonna spin around in circles here.
Yeah.
Let's try to keep a little bit of structure, you were going down, and I, we're gonna get to that stuff, without a doubt. It's just, I wanna kind of, the requirements or what we're asking for, you know, in this, if you've got this put together, let's, let's review that down over. And then one of the things that I, you know, that I'm thinking out loud, we wanna kind of get a high level of. Charlie manages the, you know, the power.
That's your.
The sewer, the water, yeah, well, I, just from a high level. You know, I don't wanna know that, I don't. I think we need to have as part of your app, as part of your piece, if you're talking about there, you know, we're looking for people with experience with. You know, utility level of power distribution. You know, we're looking for people with experience with maintaining, you know, a water system, water well, a treatment system. Just kind of a high level of bullets, and maybe they're part of what you're doing there.
Yeah, so the next one I have is, to prepare, administer annual budget, and monitor departmental expenditures.
So that's part of the manager role?
Right.
Now you're in.
Uh, supervise all financial functions, including collection, deposit, accounting, and authorize disper- dispersion of funds. Serve as secretary of the borough, maintain official records, and attesting documents. Ensure permanent compliance for borough facilities. Especially the water plant. Review, negotiate, and execute contracts, contracts, leases, with professional and legal assistance. Direct capital improvement, planning for infrastructure and facilities. Administer employee safety programs. Attend all borough council meetings and prepare agendas and background materials. Collaborate with committees, boards, and commissions. Propose and manage grant applications and oversee funded projects. Acts as liaisons to neighboring communities, school districts, and civic organizations. Represent the borough to other regulatory agencies, residents, and media. Oversee hiring discipline and discharge of employees. Ensure compliance with council policies and labor regulations. Monitor staffing needs and recommend changes to councils.
It's not reading, reading.
No, this is, this is stuff I put together.
Well, what are we gonna do, this or that?
Well.
Can we get a copy of what you have?
Yeah.
So we can see what it is?
Yeah. Um. This is, this is just general stuff, like, what he put in his list was actual what he does. This is like a general wording of what some of that stuff is, um, at least the government.
Can we get a copy of that?
Make sure it's in that work. Make sure it's in there, you've got to have it right on her. About grants, we use the white. White ones are more important than this. Right, right.
So there's borough manager and financial secretary duties. Right, as one heading.
Yeah.
There's gonna be power company, utility line distribution, I don't know how we wanna call that, that's gonna be a bucket, right?
Right, but.
Borough manager, financial secretary, there's a bucket, it's gonna have a whole bunch of to-dos in there. The power company's gonna be a bucket, it's got billing and maintenance and planning projects and streetlights and. Putting up the snowflakes, you know, there's a bucket with a whole bunch of pieces.
Whole bucket of cats.
Then we're gonna have the sewer manager piece. So you're managing, you know, whatever's going on with the sewer, cleaning and.
Well, that's actually.
And it goes on with building, sewer part, you're gonna. Okay, so that's still, so it's a sewer manager. So I can scratch, you don't have to, you don't worry about that being.
Going to manage the dose from the source, try to help them to, uh.
Well, you take the call.
Yeah, we take the calls.
You take the call if there's a problem.
And then there's the water company, with the wells, the treatment, the distribution of that.
Don't forget the zoning.
But zoning, zoning is gonna drop into that bucket for borough manager, financial secretary.
Right, that's.
Does that make sense? I'm just trying to get, to figure this.
So you get planning and zoning in there, so make sure you cover. There's a lot of that. Now, I think, in the bucket of the electric, remember that bucket is, someone's gonna walk that pole line every year. They can pick whenever they want to, with the hammer, and you hit every pole where it's grounded up. And if it's on hollow, you walk on a piece of paper, that tells the city we have to give.
And you gotta really check them for.
For a list, so that's, then you do that, check neighborhood houses.
Well, that's kind of what I'm looking at, is to take the borough manager, I'm putting kind of slash financial secretary. And I'm looking at taking, whether it's your list or this list, and kind of getting everything to the right job description for borough manager, financial secretary.
If I had to take a test, I had whatever been done there. For anybody to be hired in this borough at this level. Because it's not real, hillbilly, bro dunk, borough, when I got hired, there's a lot of shit here now.
Well, the advantage that you had previously was that you were involved as subcontractor, a significant amount of work.
Right, borough, I was like, yeah, yes.
Right, so that, but I'm just trying, you know, you take a big, great big list of this, like, this, it just makes my head spin, I'm just trying to come up with headings.
You can, you can hire someone to do the P A one calls. The company, with that company, things that, those are rather weak on them. Yeah, I did, I did the plumbing. They like, I'm a sewer, I, I'm a plumber. And I know where some are.
So, so the one call stuff would drop on the power company, or would that drop on the borough in? Cause it's got three different things in it. You know what I mean?
Water company, sewer company.
Depends on the level, you can be.
Right.
But if somebody's coming in to dig, we have to figure out those three things, fourthly.
Someone calls into P A one call company, call start company. At that point, then the manager could take that call, and call the P A one call company, and have them come out and work there.
So.
But they're gonna charge you guys.
So the value will multiply about.
Where everything is at.
So P A one call relating the activity, where it's gonna go through the mayor, or go through the manager for us?
Well, we have maps upstairs.
No.
No.
No, we don't have any maps.
They're all so wrong that you can't even. Yeah, sewer, one of the chelies is about four foot off the mark, starting to be.
The sewer, the only reason you can find out is that you can go between manholes. The water company is, nobody knows where that goes, except when you dig in a blind brook.
So, so if we have. Three, borough manager, financial secretary, we have the power company related, and the water company related stuff. So we could take this list, and we could go down through it, and we could put.
Which ones are right?
Borough manager, power company, or water company, we could go right down through this list. And then we can have it organized that way, that this stuff applies, and then you could overlay it on top of it.
Right.
With your list.
Yeah.
To try and get us A-list broken up by.
Yeah.
Does that? Is that valuable, does that make sense to me?
Yeah, my stuff, all I have is term government stuff, so if we wanna go through your list, that's the full question and stuff. Or.
Put it on the three categories.
Put it in the three categories, that's.
So, so just, just kind of going through, taking care of the property, that's kind of the manager issue.
Yeah.
Putting it down upside down.
Yeah.
Changing filters and UV light bulbs in the basement. I'm gonna say the manager's gonna oversee that, whether he does it or has a plumber to it, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna fall in the manager bucket.
Yeah.
As a what? If you do it, manager bucket.
Yeah.
It's in his list, Bill.
It's in that description, it's kind of in that, in that description.
And the same with the air conditioning stuff, that's your going to manager's list.
Yeah.
And that's somebody outside of the building.
Manager.
Foot lanes, I have to have manager. Maintain the flower that's square.
And.
Office building.
Manager.
Isn't there a lady that does that?
Yes, but that's my responsibility, to make sure that's done.
Go to the back hardware store staples, manager.
Yes. Um, the one that's cute about it, that gentleman's wife, it doesn't.
She's on my team.
Can that be signed, make it manager? Just streetlights and stop signs, manager. Now that's, I get.
Street signs and stop signs.
So I, I reflect, I give up, I'm in the back of my truck and replace all those signs.
Patty Rogers is gonna be manager?
Going forward, that would be, that would probably be more of an overseeing.
Yeah, the manager would still be the one overseeing.
I'm saying the manager's gonna be responsible for this stuff, whether he hires somebody to do it or has somebody to do it. But, but just trying to organize this in the.
Yeah. And, uh, that's where the manager.
Help with the utility truck when they come in, is that the electric?
I, I always flag it for him rather than have to hire a flag.
So that's a P for the power company side or what are you wanting to call it?
Yeah, it means he'd have to hire someone to come in and flag it, which is gonna be work.
Great, get fire some.
Just we, the boroughs would pay more, that's all.
Yeah. So do we want it to wrap with the fallen or the manager bucket or the power company side?
By power.
Yeah, take it out, okay.
So we'll leave this on here.
Put P A one.
Flagman for events and maintenance around the borough.
That'd be manager.
Clean and maintain roadkill, manager.
Yep.
Push back baseball hoop before the snowstorm, manager bucket.
Well, the manager to call the bomb, I tell him to move. I do it.
Fix all minor plumbing and electrical items, I'm assuming that's the.
Hey, listen back, yeah. You said push back basketball hoop before snowstorm stuff? You do that?
Yeah, I personally do.
The manager does it?
Yeah.
But he can hire someone to do it?
Right.
Really, you shouldn't have to push any of that back.
Extreme.
The, the, the government manager should not be going out in the street to do anything.
He does.
He does.
But this is the other thing.
Huh?
But we're not talking about him, we're talking about someone to hire. You hired a.
Can't have a reset do what I do. See, that's it.
Oh.
Keep sort of clean, clean and organized, that's building down below. So yes, that's the manager and, and power. That's both, manager and power.
Water and sewer too.
Uh, no, water is down in the room building.
Yeah, 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 the sewer stuff down there too.
Yeah, sewer, yeah, sewer, this sewer stuff down there, that's on.
The pumps and the controls.
Yeah, that's on you.
Christmas lights, is that gonna be power or is that gonna be the manager?
Well, I normally, if I can get a person that's got a rest after DUI, most community time to do, I get them to sit down there at the inspection board and whoever want, think you and I did.
I did it and I didn't have DUI.
So it kind of falls. It falls under the manager to delegate.
Yeah, delegate. Thanks.
Inventory hall materials, manager.
Yeah.
Check on water system once a day, now that's gonna be the manager. Is that, or is that someone to the water company?
Well, I've been the one that's part of my pay, that's at seven hundred and some dollars every quarter. Doesn't need more help there.
I'm thinking we're gonna want that, however, we're gonna wanna put that into the water company anyway. You guys?
I agree with you.
Now, just need to know that there is a license operator that operates a water company, which is the only way we can survive.
Yeah.
So, and he wants to retire, so.
Who holds that license?
Jeff Helwitt.
Hellwitt, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And he's there every day, every day of the week, thirty, thirty-one days, so long. Christmas time, he does not miss a day. So we'll put that under, not only P, but just water.
Take control of any problems that may arise and delegate what you can, and I'm assuming that's an overall manager.
Yes, yeah.
Replace and repair anything for the water company would be water. Uh, record electric and water bills and payments on the computer, so that's gonna be a P and a W?
That's the manager.
That's, delegates it out to one of the secretaries to do?
No.
Charlie did it.
I always do it, okay? And I put them into the computer. At that point, then Kim takes care of it. She's, that way there's, the, uh, auditors, they just do it that way, there's a check and balance, that money is checked both ways. I put it in, she made sure that it's in, checks tickets and everything. So you got that for the auditors, you have to have that balance, okay? And that, that's three hours a day, most of my days.
So, so that's gonna be a manager slash question mark because it involves other staff.
Right.
Uh, code officer, that's gonna, is that typically drop under the manager piece?
Really, it was. So I said, you guys are, you guys are gonna have to do it right this time.
When, when you're doing, when people need electrical inspections or plumbing inspections, do you have the old apartment or somebody to do that or do you do that?
I have the old apartment, I often do the electrical inspections. Because it's me, my department wants to come in.
Yeah.
So I can't do both, on the plumbing, I do, I'm, I'm all by just plumbing, so I do the plumbing inspections.
But that's something they could go third party.
Yes, they could go third party.
So what would we?
So I would say manager. Put a three behind that?
I would put manager.
Managers.
Manager to delegate, yep.
I'm gonna put M slash D to delegate.
Yeah, that old code, code dog from there. That's actually, that's not the inspection level. That code dog, it is, uh, it's one step up and one dog is switched to them. If dogs switch, well, give them letters and everything, me as a code dog, I can own their property and not tell them they have to, and that door let me in to see if somebody's sleeping in there.
So that's, so that's gonna stay in the manager position.
That would stay the.
What you're basically telling me.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not for the inspection itself.
Secretary, are you talking financial secretary or?
Yeah, well, that office secretary.
So that, that's part of the manager.
Yeah, that's part of the secretary.
Uh, needs to know what goes in and what comes out of each of the bank accounts, that's manager related stuff. Uh, do a yearly budget as manager.
Yes.
Keep the files in order as manager.
Yes.
Fill when you have an employee asking, that's manager. Keep all three parts in order, responsibility of the manager, and he can
Delegate.
Delegate or subcontract.
Yes.
Uh, maintain parking lot beside Antonio's.
One of our properties.
So it's gonna be a manager, but could be delegated.
Yes, yep. Like I had front person do.
Yeah, make sure everything is cleaned up weekly, manager.
What's cleaned up weekly?
The parks, the people, put them to use them, so, uh, we need to get a bigger trash can down below, we're going to, I just haven't got a chance to do that yet.
That will check the rentals and make sure they're cleaned up and the keys returned, I guess that's the manager.
Yeah.
Uh, lots of community and public as manager. Trash contracts every three years as manager. Borough insurance every year, manager. Pick up water bottles for the cooler garbage bags and toilet paper for the basement, that's gonna be a manager or manager to delegate.
You can sell myself shit too, but it gets all expensive when you do that.
Get streets sweeping done in the spring, that's manager to delegate.
Yeah.
Get roads brushed off the back creek side of the park, down along the river, and a well of three, that's manager.
Yeah.
Check your main cutouts monthly, that's power company.
Yes.
Uh, walk the pole lines once a year as a P.
Yeah.
Uh, look at transformer pods on, that's gonna be a P. Watch for meters or any other attachments, that's a P. Deliver electric bills to fire club monthly, is that a P or is that a manager?
That's a manager. That's just the thing where the two, both of us get together, both managers, give her electric bills and we talk about things that need to be done. It's about a half an hour, one hour, kind of.
Post all posted pool letters and properties, is that technically a manager thing?
I did it when I was their, their subcontractor. And additional moving, I took over to this position, because nobody likes to do that, nobody likes to go, I was keeping houses and pool director meter.
So that, 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 that probably falls into P.
I'd, I'd say wait, yes.
Well, that's, that's what it's kind of our waters over.
Or if we split it.
Yeah, if we split it.
Cause of, I mean, if we have a, uh, you know, some, someone.
Well, the manager's gonna end up overseeing it.
Overseeing, yeah.
I'd say you're going to do the P, so you do the W also. Over the lower. Yeah, I assume it's on all the meetings, so.
Right.
Like I did.
So posted, post all posted pool letters, that's properties.
What do we, P, N, W, you want?
Yeah, P, N, W.
So M, P, W. Uh, ensure electric and water bills are paid, if not, shut down, um.
I don't remember who you, so we'd be N, W again.
It's probably gonna be everybody, right? M, P, W?
Yeah, it could be water, electric.
But you wouldn't want somebody doing that without the manager being aware, at least.
Right.
Yeah, I think more along the lines of the manager administrates.
Yeah, the manager would give you the letter. He'd delegate that, that would be.
They would receive the letter by that point. They would receive the certified letter and have their house posted by the time you go there.
Right, and the technician would come and pull it then.
Yeah, so it's all.
Yeah.
Um, get and replace any, that's a manager. Paint lines and curbs, that's gonna be delegated by the manager.
Yes.
P A one calls, do we want them to hit the manager and then any subcontractors at, or is that gonna be water?
Let him do the.
Let him.
Let them, cause the P A one calls come into the office. Let them delegate to call that P A one company, they'll set their mark. Yes.
Uh, make sure grants are done, that's an M.
Yep.
Uh, make sure quarterly sales tax is filed, that's an M.
Yep.
Networking.
You know, that's only that off. It's the only thing we have sales tax for, is for that. Fire club and, each shop, they only two, they say sales tax.
Uh, networking with the companies, that's M?
That's manager.
Payroll approval, manager.
Yeah.
On calls, what you were saying, is manager, that it, that it may get delegated out.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a number, like, if you guys would get two P's, they can switch. One does, one, one does never, that's the other good thing about that. Just if somebody have a weekend off.
Uh, when you get called out, you must analyze the problem at hand, is that gonna be a manager?
Well, to me, I would rather find out what the problem was, then I would call, if I need a bike. Sometimes I do need a bike, most nights I don't, it ends up being a, and that's probably. So I don't need bikes, so I don't need to call back.
You don't throw a fuse?
Yeah, so, but bikes, I, I, my, I don't need that.
So that's basically troubleshooting the power?
Right.
And the water?
Yes. Well, yeah, the water is usually like. We gotta switch it, we gotta switch it. That, that's pretty sound like, so, I'll do that very quick. On call. There's no call, so we need that.
So it's gonna fall on the manager, but then you delegate it? How was spending water properly?
Yeah.
Uh, help out with the sewer authority as a manager?
Yeah.
For the runners around the storm sewer pipes, assuming that's an M?
Yeah. Force from the management.
Yeah, and then he can delegate accordingly.
Yes.
Um, the pligging channel and utility, the banking account.
All, all effort first. If all effort.
Well, pligging's different.
Yes, pligging's different. Yep, so.
But that's part of that financial secretary.
It's like eight counts total, uh, what I do, or change the water, so I have to combine me, take it off.
Yep.
If you guys, if the pressure part will be closed down, burn binding, so they come out by name, whatever this guy's credit, uh, thing is, what happened, credit card, you take over.
But that will fall in the manager.
Yes, it'll fall in the manager.
Uh, responsi- responsible for all reconciliation, that's manager. Make sure clean people perform, that's manager. Fire extinguisher testing and replacement, manager delegate whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, keep the filing order, manager.
Yeah.
All building maintenance and checking propane tanks at the administration building and water building.
That'd be a management, or you can have a power building, that's the, the one out there with the generator. And the one out there with the generators, you can have that, go that up.
Yeah, we'll see how it comes together.
Yeah, go that up.
All building, we're gonna hold the response, the manager responsible for keeping lights.
Yeah.
A B.
And I have the, I have the.
Keeping up a relationship with the, I'm sorry. That's a manager thing?
Yeah.
Just like landscaping would be grass and soap.
Yes.
Uh, tan bark, leaf fishel.
And a lot.
And the top lot, so that's a manager to delegate, probably.
Yeah.
But it needs responsibility.
Yeah, I usually get the tan bark, I get it down here. There's a core hedge box. It's gotta be, can play, play around that.
Uh, weekly maintenance on the, on the garbage bags and the trash, that's manager. Empty files and put them here in the bin, that's manager. Uh, spray for bees when needed, not the honey.
No. They're all right.
So that's manager to delegate, except. Learn as many goods as you can and know where all of them come from, that's manager related stuff.
Yes, yeah.
Borough maps and zoning maps and all blueprints, that's manager.
Which are all wrong.
I said they're all wrong.
Did you say the maps or stuff?
Yeah, the codes and stuff on.
Oh, okay.
Set up downstairs for meeting, that's always gonna be manager.
Yes.
Hold stuff letters, that's manager or to delegate.
Right. For the last couple of times, the manager going.
I know.
That's bigger than sure.
Time sheet is managers.
Yes.
Uh, the agenda is manager.
Yes.
Public water system reports, that's gonna be.
That's water. That's it.
License.
So that's a W.
Right, and the manager still has to make sure he gets them filed.
Respond to public calls, that's just random phone calls coming in, that's gonna be the manager to delegate.
And you get people to call, you know, they got someone's feed bad, that's what I'm gonna do.
A comment from the peanut gallery, I don't see anything on there about who negotiates the electric contract. You got insurance, and sewer, I mean, and trash, but that, that comes up.
The track, the electric contract is, um.
Twenty thirty two.
Twenty thirty two, it's a long-term contract, so no negotiating.
Good job. Okay.
And then the, uh, the trash and a lot of the other contracts are lowest bidder. So there's no negotiating there, you put out the bid.
Right.
Whoever's lowest, as long as you're abroad, um, they have to be in one of the contracts.
But the manager kind of, I guess, handles the grass, getting the bids out, the snow, getting the bids out.
We don't, we don't have to bid that. You can use the same value you can like, grass is that right, and so is snow. So neither one of them good over twelve thousand here, so some have to be bid out. I need to bid, your grass is done by, say, four by three different entities. Utility, water, and. Electricity.
That's, that's the tricky part about all this stuff.
Yep.
That's the tricky part about all this stuff that's listed, is you put a, you put a significant, I mean, a significant amount of your time ends up on the power company, but so many of these things kind of come in and go through and end up being part of power.
Yep.
Is Mike retired now? Is he?
Yeah.
Oh, he's not, we will no longer have him helping us. We will no longer have him helping us.
Oh, yeah, Mike does. Well, I asked if he was retired.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I thought you said he's helping us. Is that gonna be?
Is that hell wing was gonna be retired?
Yeah, hell was on.
The water guy.
So you've got an additional list that can get out of the list with an M, W, or a P, right?
They're not really M, W, or Ps, they're more of some of those bullet points. I think you have all that. Frames and all that. Yeah, I'll make a copy of it for, for Monday. But they're, they're more of a, uh, just a, a different way to express some of those work. So some of the takes multiple ones and puts it in.
Is that where you don't pour paper?
Yeah, it's like a fun.
And there's more.
Kind of a major type deal.
There's more, I just, I just.
Well, no, it's just, we had to start with something somewhere.
Right.
No question. All right, the least amount of experience here, so I'm just trying to gather my thoughts here. Um, I know one secretary does about thirteen. Um, I know one secretary does about thirteen, eighteen hours a week on bill. What is she, or what is, what do they bill her?
They're doing the, the bills that come in. And when you set, when you pay your electric bill.
Okay, so.
Come here, make it. And I set them, I pay it, I leave it, I paid it, put your check number on it, circle what you paid, make sure your check is out though.
Okay.
And then once I have all that done for the day, I can run it over to the computer, and enter all of them here.
And then. You're doing that, or she's doing it?
I do that.
Okay, so what is she doing with it?
Well, I'm trying to save it now. At that point, when I get forty of them, they all go to her. I take those forty to the bank, put them in checks, she gets the forty tickets, she enters them in the computer, in her computer. To make sure that they match with money, that I put everything in, and then try to do a cash account without putting in, or something like that. So that's, that's how that goes. And then, at the end of the month, it's all the cute computer tallies up in there, what was, what was paid, what wasn't paid. And alerts us who was, who's late, who needs, uh, what did that, it was quick, that was some cool.
So it's a checking balance system?
Yes, a checking balance, you gotta keep that. You can't let one person do all the money coming in.
And that's, that's her job?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, then she does that for the water, the electric, and she does all of the sewer.
Trash?
The trash is involved in that, yep.
Because they're all working.
Yep, she does all of our trash and reports, the, the, I'm sorry, not trash report, but the time sheet for the sewer water, all that stuff.
The other three, what are they doing on the other basis?
The other two are here Monday, one's here Monday, and then the other one's here Wednesday, Thursday. They're here for opening hours.
So there's.
From, from eight to one, they're here.
Two, so there's three, so Heller went?
Uh, she helps me do taxes, and she helps do other things when I need her, but she's as, as needed.
Well, they're, they're kind of that as Mark before.
Yes, yeah, she is, she is part time, part time, part time. She might only get, she didn't get any out of this, no, no, I didn't use her all this much.
Okay. So what are the other two, not including that, what are they doing while they're here?
Oh, they're doing a bunch of that stuff that I delegate.
Answering calls.
Yeah, answering calls.
Are they doing things on?
Yes, some of that stuff, yes.
Okay.
I delegate some of that stuff too.
That's like what I would wanna see, what they're currently doing?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of staff back there. In my mind, the way I envision this, you're not gonna find somebody who's willing to put, chances are, to put twenty, ten, you're, people are gonna come and they're gonna go, you don't know when the house is gonna turn, you don't know when they're gonna move out of the area. It'd make sense to shrink your size and have it in more streamlined, like, in a business fashion, where you have these guidelines, and have a Rolodex of people you're contacting, and these people have, you're limiting their responsibilities, you're, you're cutting it up. So they're making it delegate, so they're not doing, if this person is, has to move, another person can fill in and it's not, hey, we need to hire this whole position where you have a tremendous amount of responsibility, and it becomes a longer hiring process.
Yeah.
In my, my personal opinion.
A lot of those duties, though, are responsibility of oversight by him not necessarily acting. Um, that oversight school would remain with the borough manager, because he's the borough manager, um.
Yeah, but I get that.
And, and, you know, with increased, with increased responsibility, or increased oversight, and an actual, uh, responsibility, I guess. We, we probably have to look at further increasing the, the support staff's, uh, pay.
By doing what they're already doing?
Well, they're not responsible for it, they're being told to do it, but they're not making decisions.
I'm not responsible.
Right, and you still, I'm, I'm not, the borough manager has this guy, I'm not mentioning that.
Right, but when, what I'm saying is, when you have, when you have an increased responsibility, that you're not, you're responsible for it, you're making independent decisions on things, that requires typically more that.
The borough manager is the main guy.
So Mike, what, what do you get, man?
The borough manager.
I, I think we're on two different ways, to be honest, but, um.
You can't cut the hours down anymore than what we're already working.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we're already closing for hours. We don't have any work to go in for. If we had more work, we'd be back in the morning for hours, but we don't, so we have to have a little bit of an hour. So we chose four, five hour days, and the girl's gonna be there, because it, I'll show you what happens when they're not. I have signs sticking all over the office up there, because I gotta leave. Somebody calls, they have a problem, I gotta leave the office, so someone has to be there. So you can't cut the hour down, if you're open.
You're not talking about cutting hours.
Okay, if you're making one, you gotta have someone there, you gotta have something to limit it.
But now, my thing is, is he's technically the only one that's, that's, uh, that is, is making independent thought. The other ones are being told what to do, but he's the one who makes the independent thought.
Right, and I get, I get that.
If the support staff is gonna start making independent thought.
I never said that. My, what I'm, what I'm trying to articulate is, instead of having the one Charlie, and the three or four secretaries, or who, I'm not sure exactly how the secretary gets pulled in. His, truly, I feel like his position should be two people, so there is not so much delegatory responsibility on just one person. You split the deli- that responsibility amongst two people, so you have one person that is responsible for things, and a secretary, I can imagine being wrong, can still do the delegate work, have a check balance between the manager, and they can still do things. I just.
We do do that.
Right, I believe that.
Usually is one girl. All she does is our, our parties, I don't know what you wanna call them, mov- movie nights, all that stuff, plus I have her, she does all the group closings, she does all the, I delegate all that stuff to her. Now, the other one is on Wednesdays and Thursdays, she does all of my checkbooks, she does all the balance, everything is entered into the computer, we're paying bills with her, that is a check and balance point there, and then I check it. You guys check it before me, and make sure I didn't do something wrong. So that's all the checkpoints, we can't go anywhere with those people. I mean, the way I, that I have it worked out now, is working perfectly.
Yeah, I mean, and then if you have one person working the same amount of time as two people, I mean, it's not really changing anything.
Right.
What I'm just saying is, I'm kinda trying to emphasize the point of having two people would make the most sense on turnaround time, like, if there need to be turnover situations, stuff like that.
Okay, you're talking, if one leaves.
Yeah, I know we talked about the, the unicorn person and I agree with that, but I can't.
It's more so to admin people, or two people in general, one.
If I can, if Charlie, if he's in his legs, can be responsible for the outside, and, you know, that's what I mean, it's just. I'm kinda, I'm kinda unvoicing, I know we talked about the unicorn guy.
And that also plays into the reasonable level of being on call. Because, you know, that's, that's part of the thing, is twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
Yep.
And that plays into what you're talking about. When you got one person that you have to count on twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, it's ridiculous. You need to have, you almost need to have two people that can help manage that person.
Yeah, like I said, if he can't show up, the other one can.
Right, so it's a very large burden.
But you're not getting into this process and then seeing what.
But that, that gets back to office, we can't put in more people in the office, we have.
Yeah, no, and I just, I acknowledge, we can't figure, I don't, I don't know what they, what they exactly, I just really wanna.
Yeah, I thought you were more talking about splitting the admin portion of it.
No, no, if you have one person doing what they're doing, it's no different than.
How it is.
When Lee used to leave town, I did it.
Yes.
I'd take it six weeks at a time, to do that borough manager.
Yeah.
And that was probably going above and beyond typical call, right?
Technically, when he goes in the surgery tomorrow, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
He's gonna go on call, bring in surgery.
And I think that's one thing I go, above and beyond, so it's.
So we need to hear the call department? So we need to hear the call department?
Yeah. So we got, so there's seven of us on council, and you're saying for, for to be on this committee, the president's automatically gonna be there, and we need three?
I think so, right? Three, I bet.
Check with the lawyer, of course, but you can't go four, because that's four.
It's like two.
So you need two more.
And then we could, we could choose to do, to have a citizen.
Yeah. Hey, you have, you have. That four people are four.
Right.
And you have four.
Yeah.
Four. Four above. So, so is that something that we wanna think about, that we can make an official motion, maybe Monday night, we'll, we'll talk around the table with who's gonna be part of that, so it'll be the president and the two.
Does anyone not wanna be part of the committee?
I don't wanna be part of the committee.
Was that Bill?
I don't wanna be.
I don't need anybody.
I would like to see you.
I'm pretty available, I guess, once again, maybe it's experience versus.
Probably have interviews, I'm gonna try to get them tonight, or the evening, just I think that would make sense for a person coming in, if they have.
I would love to interview, I really would, but you're gonna have a list of questions, we can ask them what we can't answer?
You can submit questions? That's not part of.
Yeah, that's, that's not just, one just committee, you know, not available yet.
Yeah, we're gonna, so far across us.
Right, okay, I'm proud of that.
Well, hopefully we find someone.
And those, those questions can be made, you know, the answers and stuff can be made available to the council members.
Yeah, no, don't take that the wrong way, there's.
I'm not taking it the wrong way.
There's a certain age, there's certain physical stuff, there's certain.
Right.
You know what I mean, and, and, and I don't know what they are. You know what I mean, I, and I don't wanna ask the wrong question.
Exactly, that's why I don't wanna ask the wrong question.
That's, you're right.
You have to get these questions, she, I can order them, tell them, make sure we do that. Because I have a tendency to just work things out sometimes, that comes into my head, a question, it's a, oh crap, I can't ask them.
Right.
So is it reasonable for us all to think about who wants to be on that committee, whether you wanna be on the committee or not, and let's, let's try to get that motion made Monday night?
And you said it's something about a citizen, it'd be nice if we could find a citizen to settle that one down.
Yeah, we could have, we could have a citizen.
Hey, how about that? You don't want me?
Well, and let's, and let's bring that up in, in the meeting then Monday night, let's say, hey, we'll.
Cory?
Go on.
Reach out to the borough.
Yeah, let's.
I can't, yeah, that's, I, well, you, to go back, I can't get, especially meetings, because I am first week.
What about the chicken lady? Well, I forget her name.
We can ask her, yeah.
She seems pretty.
And government experience is helpful in, in asking the questions.
Yeah.
I just, I forget her name, I didn't even put it out. I forgot her name, it's come forward.
Yeah, let's talk about it in the meeting Monday night, you know, I mean.
That, that person that has chickens will probably be here too.
And what? The chicken lady?
No, I said the person that has chickens. I was trying to be, see, what I mean, I, we just work the stuff out. As my, I can learn it out, I'm not as well paid as you think.
Well, you might be, if this part, you were the other part, I would like that. Right, you were the other part of the.
When, when, when I came in, sat in my interview, that's what I said, I'm managing the borough, but it's gonna be two people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there's no way I would. And.
That's gonna be the hard part, is finding somebody to be on call.
When do we, when do we discuss pay options? We wanna see what type of responsibility we get first?
Absolutely, pay, pay is gonna be based on experience.
Yeah.
So I wanna be real careful about.
Probably should now arrange it.
Are we gonna walk from that bit? It's gonna be another piece, you know what I mean?
Well, we're, we're in the whole, we do people, we're looking under that very way.
But you're still giving vacation.
Right.
But maybe, maybe a week's, uh, personal and easy vacation every year. Nothing from that, but you get somebody, you got insurance.
Pension insurance.
That's, yeah, everything's going well.
But again, let's try for the unicorn, we'll shoot for the unicorn, and we'll, wherever we end up, then we'll make those decisions accordingly with what we know.
I just don't put this out there in my little fuel, I have somewhere around, I just think it's around twenty-some thousand dollars. It has to be used in my equipment, I can't use it on the roof. So we could use it if I pick up for a, what do you call it, side by side, something that could be an asset in this borough, to, because you're not gonna, yeah, you're not gonna, I'm not about the truck.
That's the expectation. No, but keeping the insurance.
The thing is, you're talking, you're talking truck, and you're talking probably ten thousand dollars or two, you know, I, you go out for everything, leave, I'll leave on the turf. You're not gonna find any.
Does that have to extend by a certain time?
No, I could parent you for years. It starts out.
Again, we'll just see what we get, see, see what that person is, and what they're worth.
Last good question.
Yes.
What happens if you don't get somebody by the time you're ready to go? And that's very highly possible.
I'm very.
The moment I don't, the moment I don't scast away, I'll still stay here.
Oh, hell.
Damn it.
What'd he say?
That's in Charlie.
Depends on his brain surgery.
You'll stay until I definitely find somebody?
What's that?
You'll stay until I definitely.
Yes, I would, I would not, my love, I'm sick of this borough, but.
Oh, it's on, I got that.
Oh, they'll show you later, I think. I have a lot of girlfriends in this borough.
I'm already kidding, you might know that, but you're really.
Are you gonna make this person specifically live in this town? Are you gonna, are you gonna go outside in the town?
I would love to say that it's gonna be a borough resident, but I think that narrows it to so small a group. I don't, I don't think we can get somebody.
No, so you wanna get in on the perimeter?
And what do they discuss?
We've got a, we've discussed twenty.
You know, right now, the record says we're five miles, five miles outside.
I think we'd wanna expand that.
I think it's ten.
Yeah, we were saying that, it's part of the. Like, we were hired with five, if someone changes.
I think, I think.
I think it went ten.
I think it's ten, but however, they have to live in York County.
Right.
So, middle town.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that was the last time, there was a lot of middle town people, like, like three or four of them.
So that's why we made it more county, to actually make sure that they'd actually get here within a three.
Right, so it's not gonna be, when I, if he doesn't live in town, if it wasn't Charlie.
With the residents here, even I can't get in, and I could be here less than ten minutes, I'm saying I'm legal, I can be here less than ten minutes, and they're still spawking crazy, I don't, no one would like to come back in order of what.
Oh, I know, you always have somebody in this town that's just not.
And if we have to do the two-part solution, the, the second person, we can, we can make it within, you know, so many miles again. Or zone in the borough, or, or.
Yeah.
Like, it's like Josh, they're running around, they're like Josh and Schreiber that run around the Reed and Weeder, you know, could they possibly be the second person to help?
Does, does the.
It's how liberal we're going, Josh is, I think.
This is, this is, uh, something which could ask earlier. Is it all in our best interest to, to have the, the maintenance part, portion of it, be someone who's licensed and electrical to the apartment?
No, no.
Couldn't afford them.
Not gonna be touching stuff that needs to, oh, it's, they're gonna be on outside, they're gonna be paid, uh, licensed, a local person's license. What'd you say, Cory?
You couldn't afford them.
Right, yeah, you couldn't.
Couldn't afford them, but if they're licensed, electrician, and.
Yeah, we, we invite the only one coming up to do this, to do this part. I, I'm online about it. If there's anybody, this is a free, a hundred dollar time offer for one of us.
Yeah.
Did you already get us a copy of what you have?
Yeah.
Can you take what we did tonight, add your stuff to it, we'll have outdated stuff for Monday night?
Well, we can right now, we can, because we need, if you want to.
Let me re, let me redo that, um, redo that one, and, and, I want it to sit in buckets.
Well, you get them, get them to me in all, all in, whatever, that way they have the four Monday night. Or bad, you're, you know, you know it all.
Mine, you know, works.
I know yours works.
Mike's works, I know it works.
I'll pick one.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
We'll do it.
It's not work, right?
Bill does.
Did you get your borough?
He did.
Did you get your borough familiar yet?
Okay.
Borough, yeah.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't, uh, I didn't.
And.
No, not emails. The email works.
Yeah. That also, you gotta, you wanna just put on, literally add, give me hard, I'll give you one person, you can, you can run a one hit self-toss. Not use mine. I'll take it with me.
Well, yeah, but I'm not carrying two self-toss. You know what I mean? Maybe they're able to update.
Well, well, then there's, there's ways, there's ways we can figure that out. Yeah, well, you do the same way you must add everything.
I got it.
That, the borough number rings a my friend, talking horrible that.
So that could be changed.
That could be changed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Okay. Yes. But I'm saying, it'll, talk to them wherever you're creating them, hire, see if they have them. But I don't want, not type of upgrade for them. Oh, get one form, put the stuff on, because they'll have to pull on that.
I know this is gonna take a long time to do, but, I mean, I don't know how else to, where else to start, other than doing what we're starting to do here.
I'm sure you've got it developing. You're for the next year. I'm excited.
I'm excited to go by Monday.
If you look, look at borough code, is it first class, second bit, isn't there?
Yeah. We're first, we're, we're, we're up. We're second class borough.
Second class borough code is what you're gonna wanna orient towards there because there's townships different than borough versus.
Yeah.
Independent.
I mean, like, we, we still, but I would.
And then there's also, there, there's also out there, isn't there a state agency or something for burrows that you lean on some?
Yes, capital, uh, capital.
Cap- cattle.
Yeah, capital, yeah.
Capital.
Capital. It's capital area. Hudson.
For cover.
That is also the.
Gary Myers is the guy that runs it. As long as the borough administrator. I can give you the, the, the number if you want. Just run a million for, for.